Hello and welcome to the Pittsburgh City Council Standing Committee Meeting for Wednesday, April 17, 2019. My name is Chris Dotson and with us today is Logan Showalter, our sign language interpreter. Due to the length of today's agenda, please go to the Legislative Information Center via the City Council website to read the bills that are up for preliminary vote. You can find the link in the business dropdown on the city's PittsburghPA.gov website. Click Legislative Information Center. From there, click the red launch button. This will take you to the council meeting calendar. Find the meeting for today's date and click on Agenda. The meeting agenda should open with all the bills for discussion today. Thank you and have a wonderful day.
Good morning and welcome to Pittsburgh City Council Standing Committee Meeting of Wednesday, April 17, 2018. First order of business is public comment. Members of the public who want to address City Council can come forward. They will be given three minutes. Please start with your name and address. I want to remind everyone that the rules of council state the comment is limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation which are or may be before council. That is, we should talk about things that have something to do with the legislation that we're considering. Profanity will not be permitted and order will be maintained at all times. First speaker, please.
Do I hit the screen button or something?
No, you don't do anything. Just start off your name and either address or area.
Sure. My name's Tim Robbero. I live at the 1100 block of Flora Street up in Brighton Heights. And we have a petition that we put together to try and have our street paved. It says, "We, the residents of the 1100 block of Flora Street, request that our street be included on the paving schedule for the 2019 year. This block has encountered considerable decay in the past year as illustrated by the following service requests: curb angle iron metal exposed, brick block concrete slab repair, sinkhole." All three of those have ID numbers. Although some of these requests have been addressed, the effects were only temporary. Most concerning are the large amounts of exposed rebar on the street where the children play and the voids between the slabs of the concrete that continually worsen. We appreciate your care to these concerns to keep our residents safe. In addition, an additional service request for paving will accompany this letter. Your questions can be addressed to my girlfriend who I live with, Catherine Andrews, 412-874-9034. Basically, the street's in disrepair. There's people damaging their cars every day whenever they pull into their driveways. I mean, every day we hear the neighbors' car scrape. I know another neighbor down the street's damaging his car every time he comes in. Kids are running around. The concrete slabs are completely uneven. There's cracks in the concrete. Half of our curbs are asphalt. Half of them are very shallow concrete and they're broken in segments all over the place. There's rebar sticking out of the curbs. Potholes everywhere. We're just looking to get that stuff addressed. And we have an additional. After we got our petition with all the people on our street, after circulating petition and speaking with the neighbors, the following additional concerns arose. After the city sold the parcel of land of Verizon to build a cellphone tower, large and heavy vehicles frequent the street causing additional wear and tear to the residential road. It was reported that the curbs on our block were built improperly, leading to significant decay that's seen. One resident reported he scrapes his car while pulling into his driveway due to the crumbling curbs. And many concerns reported about the safety of the children playing in the street around the exposed rebar. That's all I have.
All right, thank you very much.
Thanks.
Do you want to give that to the clerk, maybe?
I do, yes. I have a copy.
She'll make sure the member of council who represents you gets a copy of that information. Thank you very much. Thank you for coming.
Good morning. My name is Yvonne F. Brown. And if you see on my shirt, it says, "We all need Jesus." Okay, but if you don't think you need Jesus, I just want you to think about what Jesus said. There was the children coming around. They said, "Jesus, Jesus." They said the children loved Jesus. And the disciples said, "No, no." When he turned around, he was angry. And he says, "Suffer, little children, come unto me." See, in this city, we've seen the pattern over and over. You know what the pattern was? When someone that worked for this city went and got a black baby doll, would it rope around his neck and brought it into the city? Costa was over it. He was over that program, you know, over here. You know what the people were saying? And I really thought it, but you know what they said? Costa's gone. And he made sure someone put that black baby doll up there. Now, I don't know whether he did, but someone who thinks like Costa. See, because when Costa was here, and I told the mayor, when he went in city parks, you had a teacher, the summer program, he would come. He wouldn't even look at her. He would not look at her. He had to deal with her, talk around her. When there was the Duquesne Light Company, when the trees covered up the wires, and the men with the white hat, I said, "Sir, Costa said..." He stopped me right then. He said, "Was that guy Costa?" I said, "Yeah." He said, "Was his mouth moving?" I said, "Yeah." He said, "Well, he was lying." You have, we're Costa. You praised him as he left. You had the UPS man come up to my building. He said, "That Costa came out there swearing at him." And give him a ticket. He said, "I'm bringing this stuff to the building." You had Val McDonald for the children. As school board, bring down 2.5 average to 2. 2 point. They went to college, this program. You had the teachers saying they had to spend a whole year to teach them, to get them so they can go to college. You understand? Five years instead of four, the gents did. Yes, this is good promise program. I see here that Kim, you said Kim Williams, running. Kim, wherever you are, come down and tell the people what you stand for. You're a woman and maybe, you might think a little bit different than the magistrate that we have at the top of the hill. When he told me when a case was taken downtown, "We want to keep it up in here, up in the Two cities, the tale of two cities, the tale of two cities.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please. Next speaker, please. Seeing all the speakers, we'll go to the roll call.
Mr. Coghill. Ms. Gross. Mrs. Harris.
Here.
President Crowe.
Here.
Mr. Lovell.
Here.
Mr. O'Connor.
Here.
Mrs. Kelsmith. Mrs. Strasburger. Reverend Burgess.
Here.
Seven members present.
We have two deferred papers. If you read them together.
Bill 1530, Resolution Authorizing the Issuing of a Warrant in Favor of Tucker Independent Medical Experts, Inc., in an Amount Not to Exceed $9,900 for Professional Services in Connection with Litigation. Bill Number 1531, Resolution Providing for the Issuing of a Warrant in the Total Sum of $5,000 in Favor of Linda Green as Final Settlement Related to the Action Filed in the Common Pleas Court of Allegheny County.
Need a motion.
Motion to approve.
Need a second.
Second.
Need conversation. No conversation. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposers, nay. We have a new bill.
Bill 1559, Resolution Authorizing Issuing of a Warrant in the Amount of $4,554.19 in Favor of Rental Cars of Western Maryland for Damage to a Rental Vehicle from an Accident with the City of Pittsburgh Dump Truck near 1621 Sawmill Run Boulevard on November 8, 2018.
Need a motion.
Motion to approve. Brief discussion.
Second.
Second conversation.
Good morning. Welcome.
Margaret Vitale, the Claims Administrator.
Thanks, Margaret.
This incident occurred with a subcompact vehicle that was in the right-hand lane on Summ, Elrond Boulevard. Our five or 10-ton dump truck was in the left-hand lane, wanting to merge into the right-hand lane. The subcompact was basically in the dump truck's blind spot at the front of the dump truck. So when he went to merge lanes, he caught the back end of the subcompact vehicle. The, it was a rental vehicle and the person that rented the vehicle did not carry additional collision coverage for the vehicle. And they did not cover collision coverage through their own auto insurance policy. So this is the full amount of damages. The vehicle was a 2017, so the damages did not exceed the value of the vehicle.
Hey, thank you, Margaret. Appreciate it.
Harris.
Has this driver ever had any other accidents?
Not that resulted in a claim, no.
That wasn't a yes or no answer.
Well, yes, they have had other accidents, but none of which ever resulted in a claim. This is the first claim.
Okay, how many other accidents?
I believe three in his career total.
And how many years has he been with us?
That, I don't have that information. DPW would have that.
Did you get that for me?
Sure.
Thank you.
The other conversation. Another conversation. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposers, nay.
Thanks, Margaret.
The invoices are on the table. I need a motion for, thank you very much. Need a motion for the invoices.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second. Any conversation about the invoices, Mrs. Harris?
Yeah, we have a $3,000 claim for polygraph for her. I'm wondering why that wouldn't come out of personnel.
Mr. Abanik, please.
Good morning.
Good morning. On that particular one, I have to go back and ask OMI specifically why they, why they performed it, why they utilized this firm.
Okay.
I can't tell you particularly why.
And it's also $3,000.
Yes. Right at $3,000.
And do we always pay for utilizing the convention center?
That was utilized for training, I believe, as rental training facilities. I can ask the chief and get back to you on that one particularly.
Because I thought if...
Why they used the convention center, but they had a training need.
Yeah, and if, if it was for the Canines, and they were training for facilities such as this, I can't believe that they would charge us $3,000 when it would benefit them.
Take a quick look and see if there's a better description. I believe this was $1,500 a day, and I think it was, the date was from 1/21 to 1/26. So I think they actually probably got a deal on it for the time that it was utilized. I don't have a specific on the, on the exact event, so I can get back to you on that.
Thank you very much. One more. Here's another one for $5,000.
Yes, that's the, that's a membership. Memberships are granted to be over the $3,000 amount. You might note on top, under OMB, there's also the Southwest Pennsylvania, Southwestern Pennsylvania Corporation, SPC. And that's half of our membership dues for the year, which also exceeds the $3,000 limit. Memberships have an exemption.
You're talking about the $35,000?
Yes.
Okay, and there's no place in their budget to pay for that?
This is where it needs to be paid from, is through invoices. There's no other mechanism to be able to pay for the memberships. It's within their budget.
I know, but how come they've never seen them this high before?
Well, no, actually, the, the membership for Southwestern, for SPC, is about $70,000 a year. And this time, we're actually paying only half at a time. Previously, it's been a $70,000 clip that we pay all at once.
Just didn't remember us paying it out of here.
Need your approval.
Thanks, Bill.
The other conversation. No conversation. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposers, nay. There are no interdepartmental transfers. There are P cards. The P cards are on the table. Need a motion for the P cards.
Motion to approve.
Need a second. Any other conversation about the P cards? No conversation about the P cards. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposers, nay. That takes...
Thanks, Bill.
Thank you very much, Mr. Abanik, our excellent budget director. That takes us to Public Works Committee. Mrs. Kelsmith is the chair. We have a deferred paper.
Bill 1538, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 827, Authorizing the Director of Public Works to Create a Veteran Banner Program to Waiver or Reduce Certain Fees per Section 41602 of the Code to Hang Banners Approved by the Director of Public Works at Specific Approved Locations in the City by Removing the Approval of the Art Commission and Changing the Authorizing Department from DPW to DOMI.
Need a motion.
Motion to approve.
Need a second. Any conversation about this? Ms. Gross.
So Councilwoman Smith has been out with family emergencies. So we had held it so that we could kind of make sure that she was okay last week. And so I think we can just give her another time until a motion to hold two weeks.
Second.
Motion to hold two weeks. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposers, nay. It's held for two weeks. That takes us to the Human Resources Committee. Mrs. Harris is the chair. We have a deferred paper.
Bill 1309, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Human Resources and Civil Service and the Director of the Department of Innovation and Performance to Enter into a Professional Services Agreement and/or Contract with Ceridian Human Capital Management, Inc., for a Citywide Time and Attendance System and Providing for the Payment of the Costs thereof not to exceed $1,720,000.
Need a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second. Is there conversation about this?
Good morning. Would you state your names and titles for the record?
Good morning, Council. Janet Manuel, Director of Human Resources and Civil Service.
I am Santiago Garcés. I am the Director of Innovation and Performance of the City.
Before we get started, say it again, Sandy.
Santiago.
Santiago. Sounds so... Now, I forgot what I was going to ask. Why are we having such problems with the computers so slow?
So, as you know, yesterday, we met with several of your chiefs of staff. And in the meeting, we discussed, the reality is that the performance issues that you're encountering are not new. And unfortunately, they're the result of many years of underinvestment in the infrastructure and the technology. We're working on using the, yeah, like, we're trying to fix it. We acknowledge the fact that there's issues. And we feel personally bad about the fact that our users, including some of our internal users, some of the people in our own department, have issues with productivity because the computers are not working. And, you know, like, when you look at some industry standards, like, making sure that a computer doesn't last in use for more than four years, because after four years, they tend to break more. Some of our machines are 12 years old and beyond. So we hear the frustration. And part of what we want to do is partner with the council and try to solve this and try to make sure that you have an idea of how, as I said, that we're going to solve it. And we discuss about creating plans that have timelines. And again, I, I believe that we have the team that is right to fix it. It's just, it's just going to take time because we're trying to overcome a really long time of things not working and some structural things that are, that need to be remediated, the network and some other things, so.
Yeah, it's really bad. And usually, it does start up in a morning like this. And it goes on for quite some time where they can't get the information that I need to be able to work on. And I think my computer's probably about, maybe 12, 12, 12 and a half years old.
Yeah, a computer shouldn't be in operation, like, in general. An industry standard would be four years.
Right.
Max, you could stretch it to five years. So again, technology is no different from the roads and the bridges and some of these things. And when you don't invest in them, they deteriorate. And then you end up paying more afterwards. And obviously, you have the unfortunate cost of your productivity and your frustration and your staff's frustration and the other employees. We have 1,865 computers, 56 computers. Sylvie Harris is listening. She's making sure I get the number right. So it's, we have a big need. So again, we apologize for the inconvenience that you experienced. And we're working hard and trying to revert the situation, and we need your help, so.
Okay. Whatever you need, in reason. Because, I mean, we're way back on the computers. When I first came here, the school district was years and years ahead of us. And then the Connie's behind us. So what do we do? We go into a program, an old program that the Connie has, so. But anyhow, you're here for Bill 1309. Would you just like to tell the council about it? Mr. Coghill?
I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm going to let her explain this because they, the council did want to know a little bit more about it, so.
And so the reason that Director Garcés and I are seated before City Council again, as we were here on February 6, asking for the approval for the purchase of a new citywide time and attendance system, is that the current system that we are utilizing will no longer be in existence. It will become extinct at the end of this year. So therefore, we completed a RFP process and received bids from various providers that will be able to provide the city with a new payroll and time and attendance system. Also asked of Director Garcés and I, as of February 6, we had already started verbal conversations with respective union members. However, City Council had made the request for us to have meet and discuss conversations, which we did. And we provided a summary of the meetings. And it was very well-balanced meetings with all of the representatives from the unions. They are very anxious for this implementation as well. They believe that it will assist the employees with the tracking of their time, their time off requests, et cetera.
Yeah.
And so with the amount that we are asking is for a five-year term. And the implementation of this will be done in two stages. The first stage will start in 2019, and that is for the payroll aspect, which involves the central payroll department within, the central payroll area within the Department of HR. And then in 2020, will be the implementation and rollout of the time, of the attendance aspect.
And this will not be used by elected officials offices since we have a difference
You are correct.
Okay, and there's only one union, and she's tried over and over to get ahold of SEIU without a returned phone call. So every, every other union had talked to her. Sandy, Santiago, do you have anything on this?
Yeah, I would add, again, this is the payroll system and the time and attendance systems, one of those core systems that are tied at the center of the functioning of the city. And we pay over 3,500 employees every month. And doing that consistently requires big, expensive systems. And, but it's an important investment. And I think that this is, you know, like, if you start looking at modernizing some of what we just talked about, some of the infrastructure that we haven't invested in a long time, this is, I think, the right investment. And it unlocks the possibility of modernizing other systems in the police department, the paramedics with, with the finance, you know. So I think that it's a great investment for the city. And obviously, we're, I'd your pleasure of approving the funding, but we really recommend that you make this investment, keeps the city functioning.
Being paid. And getting the paycheck.
Any other questions?
Gross, are you finished? Ms. Gross?
Yes, thank you. So this technology rollout, will we have time to do this before the other one expires? I mean, it could take six months.
So the first phase, Councilwoman Gross, is the payroll aspect. And so, once this is approved at City Council, then it's for the Department of HR to start working with the respective contractor, which is Ceridian. And so we have our, you know, we'll create what is known as a project management timeline. And so for the last three months of this year, there will be a dual process run of the old payroll system along with the new payroll system prior to it going live January 1st of 2020. That will give us enough time to make sure that all of, all the transition and everything is working very well. So we're a few months behind, yes, but we still will make it work within that amount of time and still do the dual run at the end of this quarter of this year to ensure before the full implementation for the payroll aspect.
And I think you gave me the same answer last time. I think we were here at the table about this bill, so thank you. But I just want to revisit this issue of kind of like, I say it every time, we have a technology, RFP in front of us, you know, are we getting, certainly, we need to make payroll. So there's a return on investment there. We obviously know that there's, we need a tool. This is the tool. There's a price tag to the tool. But it looks like we're also, help me understand, the other side, it seems like there's two sides to the software. Okay, so we currently have payroll software, and this is replacing the payroll software. And we need to do that. But then the other side of it is what you're talking about with kind of like hourly time keeping. And that is a new element.
No, for the current system that we have, it processes the payroll, but then it also ties in with transitioning the time that is entered into the system, and the two will connect and talk to each other.
That's the new part. That's what's in the new part, or that's what we...
And that's what's currently occurring now.
Okay.
And so what, in this new process, it will do the same thing, but more on an elevated level.
In the same platform.
Yeah, and if I can speak about it, basically, the new system, which is novel to the city, but it's been kind of pervasive in most other organizations for several years now, is the electronic acquisition of the data about how many hours employees work. And obviously, there's ways to handle salaried employees and others. But right now, the processes that exist in the department's employees are directly emailing or putting, submitting a piece of paper to a payroll clerk that then has to go and retype the system, that information in the payroll system.
And the payroll clerk is in your department, Director?
Each respective department.
The data entry. So each department is sending you, let's just say, all, like, paper trail. Maybe it's a spreadsheet or something like that, but still, a paper trail. And then you have staff that are doing manual data entry?
No, each respective department within the city.
Is doing their own manual data entry into the platform that you convert into pay?
Correct.
Okay.
And that's the piece that will be, will have electronic acquisition of that information. The benefit too is that by being more streamlined, we are also going to be able to potentially, this is a promise that we're going to work on, try to reduce the lag between the time that employees work and when they get paid for those hours.
Okay, so let's, let me still break it down for my simple understanding. So currently, let's just use our own department. Someone in the clerk's office is entering in hourly personnel time from, that's, you know, City Council employees. And that's in the old system. So in the new system, what happens?
So in the new system, employees, and there's, obviously, there's different ways depending on the department. So like, public safety employees have different needs and whatnot. But the typical configuration that you would see is you would submit your own time through an electronic time card.
So if I have an hourly employee in my office, that hourly employee is going to enter their time?
In the, in an electronic...
That's kind of an honor system.
No, no, no. So it isn't. So the way that it works, it actually presents more, more checks and balances. So typically, the way, and again, this is the type of configuration that we're talking about that we'll set up. But the way that this is typically set up, and this is the way that most companies handle and public... and this is the way that most companies handle and public entities handle their payroll, you put in your time, the same way that the employees right now are reporting time to the clerk.
An employee enters their time.
Enters their time. Then, that time card becomes visible to their supervisor, which then provides an approval. That's a level of supervision that we currently don't have in the system because employees are directly giving their time worked to the payroll clerk. So, the employee, the supervisor gets the ability of seeing all of its direct reports, time cards. You say, "Yep, I agree with the time worked," or, "No, I don't agree," or if there's an error, like if an employee forgot to say that they forgot-
So, there's really not, let fewer hours of time data entry. It's just spread across all employees that are on an hourly basis, instead of them writing it down on a piece of paper and putting it into one data entry person.
But it is more streamlined because right now, you're doing a lot of double work because the employee-
But you can see it all comprehensively.
So, I mean, the experience that most places, and this is, again, we're not, this is not a particularly innovative project.
I didn't ask that you were, but go ahead, continue.
Yeah. So, it reduces double entry because right now, the employee has to enter, type the work-
Write it on a piece of paper.
Write it on a piece of paper. The clerk then has to double-enter that piece of paper, the payroll clerk has to enter that information again in another system, whereas here, that information gets into the system once, and then, from that point on, everything is just approvals, and it automatically moves through the payroll system to make sure that the employee is getting paid correctly.
This really doesn't matter unless it's significantly more expensive than our last system. What is the comparison? We can't really see that in front of us. Do you know how much you've been paying for the last five years?
I don't have that number in front of me, but I can get that for-
Well, I mean, we don't want, as council, with, you know, to have paid, you know, twenty-thousand-dollar a year for the last five years, and then be bumping that up to like three million, or I mean, three-hundred thousand a year for the next five years.
If I may, I would say, it's not an apples-to-apples comparison. Again, like, the reason why the old system is going past end of life, it is a very old system that won't work anymore.
I do, I understand that, but it would also be concerning if it was only, you know, radically less expensive than this, and that you're asking us for basically the same functionality.
No, there will, there will be more functionality. So, there's the time acquisition aspect, but there's some other aspects as well. And if I can elaborate, I can explain as well. So, the new system will have the ability of also tracking employees' records and whatnot. It's functionality that we haven't necessarily discussed in the past, but right now, our JDE system, which is the ERP, the enterprise system that manages that right now, is actually generating your W two on those things. We can shift some of that functionality into the new system, and again, improve the ability, give employees the ability of looking at their own pay stubs online, giving the ability of employees, so looking their W two. So, that's functionality that the current system's not able to do. And I know one of the pieces of interest that the council has is looking at how is it that we migrate from some, like, old solutions, like the B-three solution in the police department and in other places. We need a modern HRIS system, a modern HCMS system, to be able to port some of that functionality, the way that we're tracking employees' time and attendance and their positions and all these things. That's, so, I would say, to your point, some of that functionality right now, we're using in the JDE system, and we're paying about four-hundred-thousand dollars a year for JDE. I'd say, like, some piece of that functionality will be migrating to the new system. So, right now, we're gonna keep JDE for the time being, but that's functionality that we'll be migrating. So, I'm, like, there is a positive-
So, we'll be getting rid of JDE?
We have the possibility of being less, of moving functionality to JDE.
We have the possibility of it, but we're not sure?
No, we are sure, we are sure.
You are sure that we're gonna be getting rid of JDE?
Again, JD does two, JD does two, JD does two functions. It does the HR function, and it also does finance and procurement. The finance and procurement piece, we don't have a replacement for that. But the piece that we're replacing right now is the HR piece.
But we'll be paying less if we only use the procurement part?
Yes, we're gonna try to pay less.
But we haven't made that decision.
We don't, we're, we're trying. I've been here four months, and I'm trying so hard to do-
I understand, but you understand that our role is to ask you those questions as well, because what we don't want to happen is that we just keep buying new software, and we have, as was the case when this administration came into office, there are many multiple duplicative expenditures that had been kind of cleaned out of closets, literally. And so, we don't, we don't want to just recreate that, that mess.
And I appreciate it. And I know that we are owing you a roadmap so that you understand how all of these pieces of technology kind of fit in into the future. And I promise you that we'll deliver that. It just takes a little bit of time to create it, but-
Instead of closetfuls of boxes of actual discs of software, we don't want to just have basic, like figurative closets full of cloud-based FAT contracts that are multiple and duplicative and overlapping. So, I'll stop with that line of questioning. And I'm just gonna add to the conversation, a tiny bit about the council software or technology issues. I am curious, really, whether there is any city department that has both hardware and infrastructure as old and dysfunctional as city councils.
I'd be happy to look at creating a report where we go and we tell, we can tell you that, so, with, in the absence of having strong data to be able to articulate how old the devices are in the different departments, I can tell you that generally, the sentiment is that people are dissatisfied with the technology that they have, and they-
Yes, but that could be, you know, dissatisfied with their one-year-old computer, not dissatisfied with their five-year-old computer. And we did these inventories before, right? And so, there is an inventory someplace.
Yeah, we know, we-
It should be updated, so that we do know.
We have an inventory, and again, I can look at the information. So, there's the, in every department, we have computers that will not support Windows ten and that are way beyond the four-year mark that I was sharing with you. That, there's computers like that in every department. Right now, the ones that are like in critical condition, at least half of the computers need to be replaced within, like, immediately. The challenge is, we're trying to put together a program set, but we don't find ourselves in the same position that we're right now.
And this is not unrelated, and I'll just stop asking questions and taking up time, but if you, you know, even cloud-based systems, if you keep adding fancier and fancier software, as we all know, as home technology consumers, right, and then suddenly, you realize your device won't run the very expensive software that you just bought, right? And so, I'm concerned about both those things, right? So, are we getting ahead of ourselves? Not that we don't need to have some way to do payroll, obviously, we do. But in all the departments, we keep approving these multimillion-dollar, cloud-based, very fancy systems, and then, well, gee, surprise, we have old computers that crash when they try to run them. I mean, the computer that I had a month ago before I threw fits and demanded a newer model computer, when the department tried to give me a four-year-old, new, in-the-box computer, hard drive, it's just crashing, even running, trying to read my own email. So, I, what I'm imagining, not a technology expert, is that we could very well try to be implementing these technology, fancy, very expensive, cloud-based solutions, and find out that the departments can't actually run them.
It's a point well taken, and I think that you're very right. And again, this is where we need to partner with you guys to invest in the devices and on the network.
And we'll continue to ask you the questions so that we have a public conversation about whether the why is imprudent investment.
And we look forward to being held accountable. But again, as I'd say, we acknowledge the fact that we need to make those investments, and we'll bring forward the plans to make sure that the new software works for everybody. Thank you.
Gross, are you done?
Done.
Mr. Connor?
Just quickly, what is the backup if the system shuts down?
So, again, typically, this is a SaaS system, so the vendor is responsible for making sure that the system's highly available. There's SLAs associated with uptime for the system, so, you know, we have the ability of going back to the vendor and getting them to pay us money or to compensate us for if the system goes down.
So, could somebody miss a paycheck in there, or that wouldn't happen? Because we're gonna have a backup within our own system, just in case?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah. And it'd be very rare, again, the downtimes for these systems are, the demonstrated performance of the vendors are, like, in the ninety-nine-point-nine-something percent of the time availability. So, if there's a downtime, it'd be for a few hours, and usually wouldn't negatively impact the payroll.
Okay. And just the last thing about our computers. I know we've harped on them a lot, but, you know, when we're talking about dealing with constituents right up front, and we're the front line, everybody here, and trying to get emails out, trying to connect to 311, and it's shut down, and yet, that department, and you weren't here, but I just looked up, over the last two years, you've spent seven-hundred-and-eighty-thousand dollars on new salaries. You know, that's gonna be a conversation for council if we don't get some of these problems fixed. And we're just talking for us. I mean, we can't talk, Councilwoman Gross mentioned, we can't talk for Public Works because we don't see that all the time, or other departments. So, you know, it just, you weren't here, so it's not on you. But when we spend, you know, seven-hundred-and-eighty-thousand on salaries and the systems aren't working, it's a little frustrating to us when we prioritize. Don't need an answer, but just letting you know that. And, you know, Janet, thank you for meeting with everybody yesterday and answering most of our questions, talking to the unions on this one, too. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Coghill?
Yes. Janet, like Corey said, you know, thanks for meeting with me yesterday. It really brought a lot of light. I was a little unsure about everything you're proposing. But I'll take it from the source, I'll say that. Whereas, you know, I've been operating a business for twenty-five years, and I don't use a computer, and I don't have internet service in my house. I don't use it in this office. I use a telephone, and, you know, that works just fine for me. I know that we're not gonna resort back to those days, and, you know, that being said, to me, the first year I was here, what I learned mostly about government, and this is not a reflection on either one of you, is I'm just shocked at the amount of money we spend in technology and computers and upgrades and new software and laptops and, you know, you name it, services, I guess. It's almost become like a bad habit to me. As an outsider looking, and when I say outsider, one who doesn't use it so much, I'm just like up in arms. I just can't believe it. I think to myself, if I were a business consultant coming into any city the size of Pittsburgh, I'd say, the money we can save here. I mean, just sitting here talking about the different monies going back and forth for this, and which isn't even coming out of IT because it's coming through your department, right? But it's all tied together to me. So, to me, that's just perplexing, the amount of money. It's almost like a drug habit, except it's more expensive, I think. And, you know, it's just, to me, it's crippling to a budget. I just can't believe it. I could do so many better things, I feel, with that money. So, you know, you know, and I'll tell you, after meeting with you yesterday, Janet, the fact that we don't have a Plan B, as Councilwoman O'Connor, you know, suggested, I don't understand that. You know, to me, it's like, well, what did they do in the old days, Westinghouse's? And what did they do? I'll tell you what they did. They had somebody on payroll. They had somebody doing the payroll, the department heads. Well, a lot of people, yes, maybe so, but it's a lot of money that we're paying this company who really, you know, I mean, I don't know if they do a good job or not, because I'm not, you know, adept to what they do. But I know it costs a lot of money, and I think to myself, for us to be dependent on them in order to get our paychecks, something's not right there. We need to have a Plan B. We need to be able to go back to, whether it's each department head writing checks, I don't know. But to me, it's just, you know, so for me to grasp the money that we're spending and different technologies and for these different things is just unconscionable to me. I'll say this, you know, we talked about, you know, what they could save on. And every time I talk about technology, it's always like, well, it's gonna save on efficiency. It's gonna save on grievances, is what you said yesterday. You know, to me, I'd love to see that number three years from now, because I don't think it's gonna save one bit on grievances. I think you'll have just as many for different reasons, but, you know, we'll have the same, same things gonna be going on. I trust Bill Urbannick, you know. I said, "Bill, are we gonna need this?" And, you know, he tells me, "Yes," you know. And I trust you, too, Janet.
Thank you.
And it's not a problem. I'm not faulting you or Director Garcis on this. I'm faulting the fact that us, along with other major cities, I guess, are dependent on, it's almost like subbing the workout. It reminds me a little bit of PWSA and what they do, you know, they act as an authority. Everybody else does the work, and we just pay them. And what you get out of that is less production and not as good a service. So, just in my experience. And I'll tell you, my records, my paper records, I can show you who I, what job I did five years ago on that date, what they paid. I have all of that. I really do. So, I hate to be so dependent on that. I'll support it because, you know, you do such a nice job of presenting it, and I love the fact, Director Manuel, you always come with a smile on your face and positive energy. But I just wanted to be known, you know, for me to say publicly, I'm not for spending hardly any money on technology, because to me, it's sinking us, I feel like. And it's, again, it's like a bad habit, you know? It's like, we have to have it. And then, three years from now, we're gonna need a new system, and it's gonna cost another, God knows what. So, I just want to tell you, I'll support it because I feel like we're stuck. I hate being stuck. I hate for us to be, we act almost like a company, you know, and we should act like a company, I feel, in many ways. And for us to be dependent on a payroll company, and I asked you this yesterday, Janet, as far as the new system goes, the fact that people can report their hours in, no matter where they're at, and they can log in, to me, that's another job for everybody, and it's gonna be, you know, just more complicated. So, but we can't, it's not cheaper if we say, "Oh, we'll take the payroll system, but we'll do without that." All the same, not cost any less anymore. So, it's like a fringe benefit to the plan. Is that right?
Well, I wouldn't say a fringe benefit, but when you deal with the payroll aspect and the time system, because both will be talking to each other, so that way can transition the hours worked to generate the paycheck, so they do work collaboratively together.
Right. So, there's no discount if we say we don't need to check in?
No, sir.
Right, okay. So, and I know you shopped around.
Yes, sir, we did.
You had RFPs out there. This was probably the lowest price, and is not necessarily the leader in the business, is not necessarily the best, you know, in technology as to what they do. So-
You are correct.
So, I have a hard time supporting anything going into information and technology just because I see what we spend on it. But I will support this, Janet, because I know how important it is at this stage. The fact that we don't have a Plan B is like really troubling me, and, you know, the people work in my office anyway, so the last thing we want is not to have a paycheck. But that's just my thoughts on it.
Thank you.
Anyone else first round? Mr. Gross?
So, I'd like to just fortify the conversation that's gone around the table, around our ability to work. And I just wanted to assure the members of council and anyone else who might be listening, that between the clerk's office, myself, and Director Garcis, we have been working at this diligently for the last several months now, trying to come up with a solution that works for all of us. The only thing that I would really like to add and that I'd really like to stress is that council is the governing body, and we are elected and personally accountable to the constituencies that we represent. And the work that we do, I don't want to be diminished in the eyes of the administration, that in the digital world that we're living in, it is, each day, it's more and more imperative that we're able to connect and connect regularly and effectively to constituency that put us in these jobs. And so, I just want to reinforce the conversation that's gone around here to, and I understand, and I do really genuinely appreciate the efforts that you've made, the briefing that we had yesterday. Director came down, spoke to everyone. I just want to, again, reinforce the conversation that's come around the table here and the importance and how dependent we really are on being connected to constituency, and want to stress that and appreciate your efforts.
Thank you. And if I can just comment one second.
Please.
I think that, to your point, you know, like, computers enable people to connect with each other and connect effectively. When someone reports a crime and a police officer is out in a scene, the ability to run a criminal background check on a suspect, that's enabled by computers, like computers that can go and access the FBI's database and see if there's someone who's dangerous. No, I'm just saying, I think that it is important, when we talk about technology and the need for investing in technology, it enables the work of the city. And so, thank you for saying that.
We all share your frustration, too, and we understand how quickly everything moves today. And the second we're up to speed with what we think is the latest and greatest, it's already obsolete, and we're on to the next. And I appreciate that. I, too, am frustrated with that as well. But I do believe that between this council and the competent members of this administration, we can work through this and come to a satisfactory solution that benefits us all. So, thank you.
So, anyone else first round? I think all the comments have been articulated very clearly and well. I'm going to be a little more frank. And government changed a year and a half ago. And government changed a year and a half ago. I, I realize that there was not an earthquake, there were no thunders and lightning, but for those of you who have paid attention, government fundamentally changed, Pittsburgh government changed a year and a half ago. A year and a half ago, we exited Act forty-seven. Up until that moment, council's ability to control the budget was limited by two overseers. We had very little, in fact, we were limited in how much we were allowed to change the budget based on the Act forty-seven coordinators and the ICA's recommendations. So, council was limited. That changed a year and a half ago. Council now has unlimited authority to enlarge or constrict budget items. The mayor can veto things and we can override that veto. It's the final authority of all budgetary things lies with this council now. And those decisions with a majority or supermajority when necessary are final. So, I'm going to be really clear about my view, and this is to all directors, not to you personally. I'm saying this for the record. In my household, my children love french fries. They're grown now, they still do, but when they were little, my wife used to make, you know, them fresh. She would take potatoes and cut them up and get the oil hot and fry them, right? And we have, I have three sons that were growing, they're various sizes. I have two sons who are six-four now, but they were growing and they would eat like crazy. And we couldn't keep enough food in the house. So, there were some days she would cook french fries and there would be only three potatoes in the pantry. Sometimes it'd be six, seven potatoes, right? But it didn't matter how much she cooked. The way it worked is, everybody got their fair share. It was distributed equally, right? If there was an abundance, it was distributed equally. If there was scarcity, it got distributed equally. So, I, I don't typically complain. I'm not going to complain today. As long as I have a sense that everything is equal and everyone's being treated the same, then I won't have a concern. But if I walk in our offices and all our computers are old and all our systems are slow, and I walk in the mayor's office staff and they're, all their computers are new and all their stuff works fast, now, the mayor himself, Chief Gilman, you know, I won't look at their stuff. But other than them, if our stuff is not the same as everyone else on this floor, then my perspective is, we have less potatoes. And we'll all have to share, if our computers are slow, then everybody will share in the pain. Because I think that's fair. Everyone, if we're, if we're not equally, equally equipped, then there'll be other ways in which departments will have to feel the pain. Because everyone has to have, it has to be equivalent. Now, I'm, 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 that's not a threat, I'm not angry, I'm just telling you what we've already, as council, have decided. So, I'm telling you this now, and all the directors, the days of you coming to us and asking us for budgets based on your desires are over. Starting this year, your resources will be directly tied to our view of your results, both in your departmental stuff, both in the things that we think are important, like equity and diversity, and also things we think are important, like our resources and our offices. Now, I'm, I'm just telling you that, I think, when my children were little, the other thing, I'm, you know, I'm old, my, my kids grow, I try not to hit my kids. I didn't always succeed, but I tried not to, right? One of my rules was this, and this is my rule, is I never punish my children, never, ever punish my children for something I didn't tell them on the front end. If I didn't tell them on the front end and they did something, I let it go, right? It, it, it is my fault because I didn't tell them. So, my view is, if I tell you upfront, this is what I'm going to do, then you have a choice because you already know what I'm going to do. And I'm saying this just today, I'm not going to say this again. This is what this council is going to do. So, now, we have some time to work together and figure this out. Because between now and the budget season, if it's not figured out, you already know what council is going to do. With that, I won't say anything else. We'll go to second round with Councilwoman Harris.
I'm keeping this recording for when we get to budget time next year. But Act forty-seven, or no, Act forty-seven, there's been problems up there. Santiago, Santiago, I'll get it right. Number one, they don't have the real people that they need up there. We should be writing our own program. And then we wouldn't have to count on any companies, just what we need. Like other private companies and even the school board has written their own program. But they pay their people more. And in order to keep the people here, it used to not be salary, it used to not be how much they make, it was benefits. And the benefits are going by the wayside. We used to have great benefits. That's why people didn't mind working for the city or the county. And now the city is trying to take most of the benefits away, so that's why I hope we do keep this tape. And I'd like a copy of it, so when we're, when we're doing the budget. Within this, lasts more than a half, a half a year, there has been two hundred million dollars in bonds taken out, which is taking this council right back to where it was. When one other mayor put us where we're at right now. So, we're headed back because right now, we're at the lowest point, if you look money-wise. This year, we had, should have had at least an extra fifty-two million. But this council signed to allow sixty more million in bonds, forty million to buy a new place after we put all the money in at two hundred Ross Street. And I've got a right to know out there to find out what we spent the first hundred million dollars on. I can't see it. Those should be ten-year projects, things that we're working on, that will actually last ten years. So, I'm glad I'm hearing some of the preaching that's going on about the budget time and booking and how many people we had before and how many people we have now and not having enough workers to do the actual work. And in order to do what you need to do upstairs, and if you're as smart as I think you are, then I, I think you're going to start asking for some of those people so you can run the Not count on a company that just keeps bleeding us of money. And that's what they're doing. If you have a programmer, people up there that know what they're doing, and write our own, we won't have any of this. So, I'm going to keep this tape, but I'm going to put a screen up there and play it next time we do the budget.
Thank you very much. That's all, that's all.
I'm not done.
I'm sorry.
Excuse me.
I'm sorry, I thought you were.
No, everybody else had twenty minutes. Half hour, let me have mine. It's my...
I shouldn't have adjourned.
Well, that's the problem, too, of trying to get up too quick at the table and not asking all the right questions. But this is the time, and this is what we're really supposed to do, the budgeting. So, you get it together, Mr. Santiago, and I'll be up to see it because you know exactly what you need up there that you don't have. And if you had it, we wouldn't be having to work on spending millions of dollars every year. But would be paying the people right, or would be having the benefits right to have to do what we need to do here. But this is government, and it shouldn't be this way. So, I have no problem, I mean, I kept her and we battled it out until we got to where I felt pretty good about what we could do here. And I like that officials or offices are much different than the regular paid staff, so. And I wanted to thank you publicly for going out and talking to each union like I asked. And some of them, you had to really work hard on getting a hold of and, and one that never returns your call, which is, was not right. So, that's all I have.
Thank you very much. Mr. Cockeill?
Yeah, I just had to follow up with what I was saying. Above all, you know, above everything, and I'm talking to my staff and we're talking about, my, my chief of staff was in here the other morning, to everybody's point about our computers, seventy-one minutes it took her to get online, okay? And a lot of these younger people, they don't even know what to do. I mean, I'm like, we'll pick up the phone, okay? But, but so, so for me, as an outsider, again, because I don't care about it, I really don't. I don't need it and, you know, as far as accessibility, for me, I get to talk to the people I want to talk to when I need to talk to them. But to prove something that we can't even use because our computers won't allow us is just like, wow, have we all gone nuts here, you know? And until we get our computers up and running to where we can, and, and, correct me if I'm wrong, if you're out at a site at a meeting, you get called out, Katie gets called out Saturday evening for a meeting, and she wants to log in, she'll have the same problem on her phone as we do here, as far as logging it in, right? So, if it's an hour delay for whatever reason, she'll have the same problem, right? So, she can't really log it in until the next day, anyway, and she has to come back and, and log it in. Is that, is that correct?
Not necessarily so, and I'll also defer to Director Santiago. You know, in, in the technology world, sometimes it is easier access to get online via a smartphone than a computer or even an iPad, but then also due to the signals that are tied in with the technology, you know, sometimes, you know, as you may know, sometimes you're on your cellphone and then it just drops because of the lack of signal. But I cannot state that if she's out and utilizing a smartphone, that she'll have a harder time logging in versus sitting at the computer. But as I stated to you in our briefing yesterday, you know, there are mechanisms in place that if they are not able to sign in at that time, that we will be able to work with them to account for the time that they worked.
Oh, it's like another job, right? You're going to work with them. What do you mean, you're going to get together with them and figure out how to log it in?
Even, even if it's the central payroll department working with the staff to ensure that their time is entered correctly, absolutely, that's what we do.
I also want to be on record, I think that's a bad idea, making everybody log in. I understand the technology and that you have everything at your fingertips, but for me, my business, I know what they do by the work that they do. I know the hours they put in. I don't, I don't even need to keep track of them, I feel. And the directors, I feel, shouldn't need to keep track of their own people. They should hire the right people, they know that they're doing a good job. And, you know, if there is something that comes up, then you address it. If somebody's playing at the park when they're saying they're going to be working, these phones aren't going to make anybody any more honest, I could tell you, you know? There's, there's always a way to cheat the system or beat the system. And that's, it's always going to be that way, no matter how, of course, there'll be new technology in three years to combat that probably, that we'll buy, I guess, or something. So, Director Garsis, did you want to elaborate on that?
Sure. And I think that it also addresses, up to some point, Reverend Burgess's point as well, the performance issues that you're experiencing, which we, there are, they are true. And in fact, one time, the Councilman Kraus invited me, he was saying that they're experiencing these issues. I went personally down to the council and tried to sign in to one of the virtual machines. And I, I have, I know that the, that the login issues are real. So, we're all drinking out of the same fountain. Everyone's experiencing the same issues. And I could give you some technical explanations around why the issues are there. And right now, there's an RFP to get an external partner to remediate some of the core issues. But there's a litany of problems that I've inherited, and I'm here because I want to do a good job, and I believe that I can do, I, I have the technical expertise and I have the leadership expertise, and there's great people in the department, we can turn it around. You're absolutely right, we have issues and, and you're absolutely right when you can't log in.
It's almost like putting a cart before the horse here, you know? If we can't use our computers, you know, efficiently now, and we're being asked to log into a system that's more efficient, well, what good is it if we can't get it out of this office here?
And, and I'll say the following, I believe that within the next year, we can do great change in the core systems. It's going to take time and it's going to take money, it's going to take discipline on our end to shift some of the funding, to make sure that we're fixing some of those fundamental problems. But that is my number one priority. And in fact, the councils right now are number one priority with regards to computer, and you have been for the past month and a half. We sent a list of computers that we thought that would be suitable replacements a, a month ago, and as the president was, the council president was stating, we're working really hard, trying to work together to, to get it right. So, thank you for your patience. And again, we'll, we'll get through this and hopefully by, hopefully by the budget season, I hear you very clearly, and I know that we serve at the pleasure of what you decide to fund. So, hopefully by the, by the budget season, and definitely by next year, we're in a different position and hopefully we're singing the praise of some of the accomplishments and less talking about the things that are not working.
Just in case, to have a Plan B, Councilwoman O'Connor and I are discussing maybe putting forward a, the Pony Express or going back to Pigeon Carrier Service, you know? So, we feel like it'll be a lot less and cost us a little bit in hay and everything. We're going to transport all the manure out to Councilwoman Gross's district so she can grow her beautiful...
Any other conversation? No other conversation? All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay. We're going to go out of order and go to page nine, which is the Mr. O'Connor's committee, which is the Intergovernmental Affairs Committee. Mr. O'Connor is the chair, we'll just go in order, if you don't mind, Mr. O'Connor.
Oh, you want to go in order?
Right, we have a deferred paper, two thousand nineteen, fifteen, fourteen, we're in, Mr. O'Connor's.
Fifteen fourteen. Resolution adopting the plan revision to the City of Pittsburgh official sewer facilities plan for the Twenty-first and Smallman mixed commercial development project. The existing buildings will be or have been demolished, and new buildings will be a mixture of restaurant, retail, and office space. Parking will be provided via a third, three-level parking deck over existing surface parking. The site is located on the north side of Smallman Street between Twenty-first and Twenty-third in the second ward.
Need a motion?
Motion, all, one week.
Need a second?
Second.
Any other conversation? No conversation? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. I think we can do the next two bills together?
Thank you.
Bill fifteen sixty, resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Human Resources and Civil Service to enter into a interlocal agreement with the County of Allegheny and Partner for Work for the Shared Operation Administration, the twenty-nineteen Learn and Earn Summer Youth Employment Program, in an amount not to exceed one million five hundred thousand dollars. hundred thousand dollars, and for the payment of the cost thereof. Bill fifteen sixty-one, resolution providing for the authorization to make all legitimate expenditures for payments and agreements with various agencies to conduct a summer youth employment program to youth residing in the city, summer staff wages and administrative expenditures necessary to implement the 2019 Learn and Earn Summer Youth Employment Program, and providing for the periodic transfer of funds to be used in the 2019 Learn and Earn Summer Youth Employment Program for payment of costs thereof, not to exceed two hundred thousand dollars.
Need a motion?
Motion approved, discussion.
Need a second? Need a second?
Uh, thank you. So this is our annual allocation for summer learn and earn, I know Reverend Burgess is a huge supporter of this, as well as other council members throughout the years. This is just the intergovernmental agreement that we have with Partners for Work, as well as the county. Based on this, we've expanded to a number of more kids that get to be involved in this, which is a great program. I have no further questions, I don't know if any council members do, but this is our annual allocation for it.
Any other conversation? Deb, Ms. Gross?
I'll just ask if the, what is the projected participation? Did you just say what it was last year? Because I feel like we're, we're doing a good job of getting more and more participation each year, right? I think I've heard Councilman Burgess say that every single applicant found a placement, but I can't remember how many that was, in absolute numbers.
So in two thousand and eighteen, there were one thousand eight hundred and twenty-three youth that participated and were placed in summer employment opportunities.
Fantastic, so are we projecting about the same level this year?
We are hoping to go higher, but yes.
Wonderful, wonderful, we look forward to hearing about it. Thank you.
Anyone else for a row? I'll just say that I am so grateful to be with the competent staff and the other people who oversee the program. Of all the things, there's been my privilege to sort of champion on council, the summer youth employment program is in my top two, right? My top two favorite things, in part because as I say all the time, I was a product of the summer youth employment program, I paid for my textbooks and my tennis shoes by working summers in Park Recreations, in fact, at Mellon Park, and so I'm grateful for the expansion of the program, and I know that we're helping kids, and the best way to keep kids off the street and from doing bad things is to give them a job, a little bit of income, and let them learn that you can earn your way to success. Any other, seen no other conversation, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Positive recommendation, thank you very much for coming in.
Thank you, City Council.
Um, Mr. O'Connor, how much of this, of the rest of the bills, do you want read together?
Uh, I think fifteen sixty-two, sixty-three, sixty-five, and sixty-six can be read together.
So not sixty-four?
Sixty-four, no, I think there's gonna be a little...
Okay, one to five...
Explanation on that, yeah.
One to five excluding sixty-four.
Bill fifteen sixty-two, resolution authorizing the URA to acquire all the city's right, title and interest of any in into the publicly owned property in the thirteenth ward of the city designated in the D Registry Office of Allegheny County, Council District Number Nine, corner of North Bradock Avenue and Sesquahana Street. Bill number fifteen sixty-three, resolution authorizing the URA to acquire all the city's rights, title and interest of any, in into the publicly owned properties in the thirteenth ward, seventeen, seventy-five thirty-seven and seventy-five thirty-nine Sesquahana Street. Bill number fifteen sixty-five, resolution authorizing the URA to acquire all the city's right, title and interest of any, in into the publicly owned properties in the fifth ward of the city, new construction, thirty-three twelve and thirty-three fourteen Camp Street.
All right, I need a motion to approve, Mr. Connor.
Uh, you can read sixty-six as well.
That's what I was thinking.
Yeah.
Bill fifteen sixty-six, resolution approving execution of a contract for disposition by sale of land by and between the URA and the Hill Community Development Corporation, or any entity to be formed with respect to the sale of lots seventeen and eighteen situated in the fifth ward of the city.
Need a motion?
Motion approved.
Need a second?
Second.
Any conversation? No conversation, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That takes us to, back to fifteen sixty-four.
Bill fifteen sixty-four, resolution providing for the execution of a corporation agreement with the URA for the administration of certain projects and programs, and providing for the payment of the cost thereof, not to exceed two million five hundred and fifty thousand dollars, Council District All.
Mr. Connor?
Thank you, motion approved, discussion?
Need a second?
Second. Uh, so this is funding that we had already approved prior, last, last month, I believe, we did a transfer between the URA and PLI because CDBG funds were gonna be transferred over to do demolition, and that's why this intergovernmental transfer has come up, but we had already approved these funds, both departments are being kept hold, nobody's getting more or less, but that's what this agreement is for.
Thank you very much. Any other conversation? Ms. Gross?
Uh, thanks for the remembering, I don't have...
Sixty-four.
This text file in the packet left off the entire committee, so I'm just gonna ask the chairman, if you don't mind. Uh, you, you reminded us that it's, it was mostly for demolition, was it also some landslide?
Uh, I don't believe, this was between PLI and the URA. What I can do is, I will provide you with a breakdown of where the funds are gonna go as well.
That'd be helpful.
So that way we can see them.
Yeah, I would appreciate that.
I think it was in the text file, right? Oh, she's gonna get it, okay.
Thank you, I appreciate it, they're just both really big topics, and so I just wanted to stay current, thank you.
Any other conversation? Seen no conversation, all those...
I still have the...
Ms. Harris?
Yeah, the all part two, I'd like to see what they are.
All right, so do you need that before voting, or do you...
Yeah.
You need it before voting?
Yeah, 'cause I don't wanna give them pieces.
Okay, if that's true, is there any commerce, is there any more conversation about this? If not, I'll leave it open, go to another, another item and come back to it, all right? And that's Bill fifteen sixty-seven.
Bill fifteen sixty-seven, resolution authorizing the mayor and the Office of Management and Budget to renew the non-exclusive license agreement with the Federal General Services Administration for the Veterans Affairs Highland Drive campus for limited use, and to conduct the due diligence pursuant to the application approved by the Federal Emergency Management Agency and the Department of Justice to acquire the property for law enforcement and emergency management purposes.
Need a motion, Mr. Connor?
Motion to approve.
Need a second?
Discussion.
Need a second?
Second.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. As, as Councilwoman Gross just pointed out, that we've, we've done this a number of times, we're going through the, the ringer here with agreements, if you just want to explain this one, but if, in case anybody doesn't know, this is the VA project that we are working out with the federal government to have our training facilities be moved up there over the next couple of years or so, so this is just another part of the agreement that we have to go through with FEMA, if you want to explain any?
Correct, so, as you stated, this is part of the city's public benefit conveyance from the federal government to obtain this property for free from the federal government for the exclusive use of law enforcement and emergency management purposes. And also, as you said, this is the second time that we're going to renew this agreement. We entered into the first one in September, and then we renewed it at the beginning of the year, both times with the hope that we would have the property under ownership by the time that it ended. But as we discussed in those previous meetings, we're still going through the Section 106 Historic Review process with the state and the federal agency, so that's ongoing, we've had recent meetings where we've made leaps and bounds of progress, so we, we expect a conclusion to this sometime soon.
Thank you, I'm fine.
Any other conversation? Ms. Gross?
What sometime soon means?
No, I started first, I'm sorry.
Weeks, months? Just curious, I know everybody, a lot of people are curious, so I just wanted to...
Um, right now, we've had a, in the process, we just received our last draft meeting minutes from the last meeting, the Section 106 consultation meeting, which was last Tuesday, we will, next step will be, we will be given a letter of assessment of effects, from that, we will, in sixty days, we will have a draft of agreement available for law department review.
Sometime this, before the end of the summer?
Correct.
Yes.
All right, that sounds like a good ballpark, we can live with that. Okay, thank you for your...
Thank you very much, Ms. Harris.
So does this put us in ownership?
Yes, we would own the property.
All of it?
Yeah, it's a, we would, we would own it, yeah. Yes, own.
Like, nobody, federal government, nobody can take it off us.
No, we would have to use it exclusively for the use, there would be restrictions on the deed, but we would be the owner of it.
Okay, what are the restrictions?
They would have to be, the use of the property would have to be for law enforcement or management, law enforcement or emergency management purpose.
Okay, so anything such as fire, could it be fire?
Absolutely, fire, police, EMS, yes.
Fire, paramedics, BBI? Animal control?
Yes.
Car and control?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I, I just wanted to put that, BBI, because someday it's gonna be changed back, I'm sure, and be under public safety, which it should be. Okay, so this, this will be ours, as long as we keep using it.
For those purposes, that are approved by FEMA and the Department of Justice.
Okay, so what are we gonna do then? We have, we've remodeled CCAC?
We did do some work to that, CCAC did the majority of the work.
Did a lot of work to CCAC.
We, we, so I made sure to look that up before this meeting, 'cause I know you've asked before, in two thousand sixteen, whenever we moved into that building, we put about fifty thousand dollars worth of carpentry and painting and plumbing into, into those facilities that we are leasing from CCAC. In two thousand sixteen, to, to get those up to our standards of use, well, 'cause they were, they were art buildings before, so we have slightly different use, so there was some investment that we had to put into it.
So we had to put investment into it in two thousand sixteen?
I would have to look to see if we did anything since then, but, yeah.
Okay, then, uh, we've been paying rent on Western Avenue for quite a number of years.
Seventeen years now?
Uh-huh, so does that mean all of Western Avenue is going to?
That is the plan, yes.
Okay, what about the school that you're, I guess, under are ready to remodel or are remodeling?
You referring to Stevens School?
Yes.
Uh, so I think Stevens School, we're still having discussions about what's finally going to land there, but it, it will have some public safety element to it, most likely, what, special operations, is that? Yeah, yeah, so I think there was an original plan that had the entirety of that school being all public safety, we have to make some adjustments to that, just because we can't fit quite everything, but, but yes, there's still a plan to have some operations there.
And how much did we remodel there?
We haven't put any money into that right now, I mean, we got, and, and also, we got a significant, we got a million dollar state award for that, as well as an additional award for the surrounding parklet, Townsend Parklet at that school, so even if we had spent money, it, it would be backstopped by other funding, so, but yeah, I mean, I think that's a good question, you know, we, we still...
Because how many acres, and I, I know there's lots and lots of acres of ground, how many acres are up there?
Total, it's a hundred and sixty-eight acres, but only sixty-four of that, which is still a large portion, sixty-four of that is buildable, the rest is heavily sloped and heavily wooded, so it's, it's not really buildable area.
Yeah, but there's a lot you can do...
Oh, we, we could certainly program some, yeah, we just can't build on it, but we could, we could certainly use it for, for training and other activities.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I, I just wanna say on the record too, that the administration, and I'm sure council agrees, remains committed to having the zones in our neighborhoods, we do not intend to put the zone up...
Well, that would be dumb, that would be really dumb.
Agreed, I just wanna state on the record that we remain, we're trying to get closer to community and police cooperation, not further away, so the operations that we're talking about centralizing there are things that get, functions that don't need to be in those neighborhoods out, and so, the zones will remain as part of, part of those.
Now, that's not close to every part of the city, so I'm wondering about, say, SWAT.
The SWAT discussion is part of the Stevens School, District Two discussion, so, but I think important to remember that the busway is right at the top of Washington Boulevard, turns into Fifth Avenue, but access to the busway is right there, so in emergency situations to get downtown or to other parts of the city, that is one of the appealing features, so, but no, it's not...
It doesn't, oh, all, it doesn't sort of centralize.
But I mean, I don't know, also, anybody who's been at police headquarters at rush hour, trying to get out of there, either up twenty-eight or across three seventy-six, it's not, I mean, I sat with the public safety director for an hour and a half coming back from a meeting with some officers there just, you know, a month ago, so it's not like our current operations are exactly ideal either for getting around the city, so we're gonna have challenges, it's city divided by bridges and water.
Yeah, well, I, I'm thinking the things that you need centrally located.
Yeah.
Um, and I think you're gonna have to think centrally located, and there are parts of the city where you can get onto all the highways, so, I don't think it would be smart to keep something that you need, because you would have never gotten out to Squirrel Hill.
Let's, let's continue the conversation about the parts of public safety that you're concerned about, so, we take it seriously, we, you may have something that we haven't thought of, but...
Okay, yeah, that just, that's the part that, that concerns me, all the rest is great, there's enough room, uh, but the fire will still keep what they have done on Washington Boulevard to...
That, that will go up the hill to the site, yeah, to, to the Veterans Affairs site, so everything that's currently there, except for the zone, which will, which will get off of there, but likely go into a neighboring neighborhood, the Fire Academy and, and the Training Center that's there will be up at the Veterans Affairs site.
Just gonna pick it up and move it?
It'll be rebuilt, right, yeah, I mean, it's, it's currently a building and then two trailers effectively, so, and then another, so it's, yeah. Moving all that programming up the hill will also allow us to remediate that, that property to help alleviate the flooding issues on Washington Boulevard.
So would it, um, would it be more money to pick up the building and take it up there, or would it be...
We also wanna make sure that we're providing our, our public safety personnel with state-of-the-art facilities, it's really important, they're the ones out there putting their lives on the line every single day for us, so the least we can do is provide them with the assets that they need to do the job, so we wanna make sure that they have everything they need.
Did you give your title when you came in?
Oh, no, sorry, Peter McDavid, Senior Asset Management Analyst.
Okay, just wondering, I didn't know if you did or you didn't, but I, I think it's, I mean, the more property they have, the only difficulty that I see is, um, any way you try to come in from twenty-eight is gonna be a real problem, so you're gonna have to figure that one out. I know we're not buying an airplane to bring over.
Unless you want to.
Uh, are the horses, horses gonna stay out there too?
Horses will remain, well, I guess temporarily in River View, right? Yes, they're at River View Park now, but the ultimate goal is, we wanna own the buildings that we're using, doesn't make sense to lease things like that, so they would ultimately go up there with the rest of the programming, just so they can also have everything in the same place.
Yeah, we want to own the buildings, correct, but, um, the, the one factor that you have to look at is timeframe of when you're going to need something.
Absolutely, yeah.
And those kind, types of programs are gonna maybe have to be centrally located. Okay, okay, and as long as we're using public safety up there, that's going, that's...
Then it'll be under our ownership, and we, and we'll get it conveyed to us for free.
Okay, so that means we send public safety from the fourth floor up there too?
I think they would still retain a presence in, in this building, to a degree.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Gross.
Thank you, I know that we're not kind of at the table with the federal government, so help me understand the, remind us this, the acreage?
It's a hundred and sixty-eight acres total.
It's very big.
It's very big, yes.
And to de-restrict it to just public safety, I'm curious about that. And, um, to deed restricted to just public safety, I'm curious about that.
Yeah, so the pro, so they require that you do that, so the, the general process, you guys can add detail, um, but is, uh, the federal government's, uh, puts a piece of property up for all of their departments to decide whether or not there's any value, uh, they determine that it's in excess, and then, uh, people can respond like a city or a private entity and say, we'd like to acquire it, either for a public benefit, like we did, there are other tracts, you could purchase it at market rate, and, uh, they make you apply for a specific use. We in fact had to negotiate, uh, to get the emergency services add-on, it was originally just for public safety, so I make this joke a lot, but I'll make it again, it's, it's funny that the federal government determines that it's completely useless to them, but then tells us we have to use it for one thing, but that is in fact the process, and we've had a great relationship with them, but that is one of the nuances of the public benefit conveyance. Um, I, I think, um, you know, important to note too, uh, there was, uh, we were the only legitimate applicant for the site, so we're not really pushing anybody out, you know, because that's the constraint. Uh, we've talked a little bit about veterans housing for that site, but, um, not possible under the, the current, you know, alignment, but yeah, they require us to, to pick it for one use in order to get it for free.
So I'm going to just continue that for a minute, so I think it was wise to include the emergency management.
Absolutely.
And because what I think we've seen in our budgets is that things are collapsing, right? We know that there's a lot of infrastructure, I mean, I'm thinking about the Greenwood Bridge, um, that was a really big DPW project, um, and we have flooding, hillsides, landslides, and all those functions would be under emergency management in my eyes.
We, they will be going up there because our DPW are first responders, you're absolutely right, um, our heavy equipment division will go up there, we'll have winter weather response units up there.
And we have to expand that capacity, I often say this about infrastructure and our capacity to do building pro, construction projects, building projects, engineering projects, is that we've kind of, we lost that capacity both under Act 47, but also because, you know, when things were only 20 years old, we didn't have to build them again, right? But now that things are 100, 120 years old, we're really rebuilding the city, and I usually add above ground and below ground, and it's all kinds of stuff, right? So, um, so we will be able to do that on this side is, is what we're negotiating for?
Absolutely, so.
I'm glad to hear it.
FEMA and the Department of Justice have, uh, approved our applications, so, um, we did include in there, uh, under emergency management, um, because it's actually two different uses, emergency management and law enforcement.
I mean, I'm thinking of like the resilience plan, right?
Yes.
Like those kinds of, like, what are we afraid of, bad things that might happen?
Preventative maintenance.
And how do we build up the capacity to prevent those bad things?
Good preventative maintenance is part of emergency management, and FEMA agreed with that, so.
Okay.
They also agreed that our fleet maintenance would be part of that, um, we have to have a responsible fleet so that we can adequately address these.
So we can maybe bring some of that in-house as well and actually have some capacity?
Yes, so that, they've approved that.
That's really good news.
Yeah.
Very excited about that.
Also something I know near and dear to you as a board member and as, you know, resident, but flood control, green infrastructure, um, actually on the site, not just down on Washington Boulevard, but up on, up on the hill.
Right, because it's, and it's increasingly throughout the city, I mean, I think that was the kind of canary in the coal mine that made us really, you know, tragically aware of the vulnerabilities and really the threat to public health that these issues are, and now we're seeing more and more. So that's really wonderful news, well done, thank you.
Mr. Carter.
Just a quick comment and we can get out of here, okay? Um, you know, as far as that site goes, you say we own it, okay? So 200 years from now, we want to sell that, and somebody wants to put a housing plan there, we want to sell for a billion dollars. Can we do that then?
We would have to go through, we would have to jump through a couple of hoops, um, but we're, we're getting this for free because we're using it for a public benefit use.
Uh-huh.
So if we ever intended to not use it for a public benefit use, we would have to go back to the federal government.
Right.
Because of those restrictions.
And they can deny it and seize the property again, right? If they wanted to.
Oh, I appreciate it.
We would have the option of buying it at the market rate value at that point.
You have the option, okay, so, well, that's my point, I mean, I, I don't feel like we own it, I know, I understand, we own it, but if we, it's not an asset for us, so, you know, I love the idea, I love our, you know, our training, second to none to have that facility there, all for the idea, but, uh, I just get confused when you say we, we own it, and if 200 years from now, which, you know, comes, you know, before you know it, we'll be long gone, uh, 200 years from now, if we want to sell that.
Be when this meeting's over.
We have to go back to court. So that's just, you know, I, I don't look at it as an asset, I guess. An asset would be, we can sell that for the current market rate, but you're saying we have to go to court, readjust everything, and then we can buy it at fair market value, which means we don't own it to me, so it's just kind of skewed to me, but that's okay. I love the facility, I know in my lifetime and our lifetimes, it's not going to be an issue.
This is the last thing I'll say, I promise.
Yeah.
But what we do own and what will be the next part of the discussion are the areas that we're getting out of, a lot of which are in Councilperson Gross's district, we have to have a lot of conversation about how to do that right, but we do own those, there is a lot of money in public interest and public benefit that people are at those sites, so this site may be deed restricted, but the other ones we're getting out of, not the case, so just, yeah.
Sure, freeze those up.
Yep, yep.
Any other conversations? Ms. Harris.
You just said something, um, that we keep all heavy equipment?
Yes, the heavy equipment division, FEMA approved to move the heavy equipment division up onto the site.
All heavy equipment?
I mean.
Are we talking public safety heavy equipment?
No, DPW. So like our, our, our big machinery that we have down, um, that's shared with the Sixth Division currently.
Okay, so would you also take up there the repair shop for heavy equipment?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, which means you're going to build a new building for that too?
Yes, correct.
That's correct.
And what year would that happen in?
We're still working on the construction timeline, the proposed construction timeline for this, um, we're a long way away from that yet.
Here's my problem, okay, when you use bond money, it's supposed to be used for things that are going to last over 10 years, okay? However, uh, there's a lot of our firehouses, police stations, paramedic stations that still have, have not had the repairs needed. Fire, for example, fire station, uh, they, they have no windows they can open, although everything sealed shut. They don't have the proper air, and all those fumes are still getting in to where these people stay.
Hmm.
That's a real problem, and if something isn't done, the city will pay dearly for those issues.
Absolutely, I, I mean, the three of us at the table here are very aware of that problem, and while this will be, um, along, and it, it's going to cost a lot of money, but we can't put all of our money into that basket, we do have those other facilities that we can't lose sight of, and, and we do intend to continue to invest in those buildings that are used day in and day out by our public safety personnel.
And I'm, I'm not seeing the investment, I, I mean, you say, show you the money, we showed you the money, you have over $200 million in bond money, and that's why I'm asked, and I want to see what you spent on the first million, and I'm not seeing firehouses, police stations, paramedic stations, anything that, that needs, I'm, I'm talking health department issues.
Maybe offline, we can give you some of the recent work we did, like the firehouse up in Observatory Hill, uh, we just did some work there, but why don't we get you?
That was before.
We did some recent work on that, but, we'll get you a list.
That work was done under the last mayor, most of that work, I mean, you might have did a tidbit, but, um.
We'd be happy to give you a list of the public safety work that we've done.
And they used pay-go money for that, but, uh, I'm talking, you know, places not just in my district, I mean, you have, uh, divisions falling apart that need built first, and they need to be built in the neighborhoods, you need to take the First Division out of the park because it's like all over, already know where we can put it there, where there's no problem at all, um, so you just, you're going to have to do this slowly.
Thoughtfully, yes, yeah.
Completely agree.
Okay, because, uh, after, I mean, what was the first one? First $60 million in bond that you guys asked for, mayor's office asked for?
I don't, I, I'm happy to get our budget director and finance director to follow up with you, but.
Well, I, I did do because I can't.
We can speak to the facilities work, you know.
Because I can't get the information, I did a right to know, and I want to know detailed.
Understood.
On that. Um, that's very serious, you guys work in this building, right?
Yeah.
Okay, what if we tear off some asbestos and just, or the floors and just like you stand there? That's what's happening to our people, they're living in black mold and everything else, and I haven't seen anything start, and I'm worried about their lives, and then on top of it, we're supposed to be worried about the air quality and our water, and what do we do? We start putting plastic down on the street, which is ripping up and going right down our drains. So yeah, I'd like to have a long talk with you.
Good. Any other conversations? So you know the conversation, all those in favor signify by saying aye, opposers nay. That's going to take us to page five of our agenda. I'm going to.
The other bill's still open, the URI.
Did they get?
Yeah, they get them.
They, I didn't know they had the text, did they have time, did you have time to review it? Or do you want me to go on to another bills?
Uh, no, you can, if we can talk about it now.
All right, so that, so that takes us to, sure.
May I please, uh, register my votes on the bills and submit all remaining bills?
So not it.
So we're on, um, uh, Bill 1564, I believe?
Yes.
All right, uh, Mr. Carter has the chair, any conversation or any? No conversation now? Ms. Harris?
This is 1564?
Yes.
I still need the information because it says, now, Corey, that's not the information I'm looking for, I'm looking for, it says all council districts, I want to know what they're doing in all council districts, specifically in District One.
So what we can do is.
We can ask the URI to get that for you, but it's not in the context of the bill.
What we can do.
And it should be.
So listen.
If you're saying, oh, you should have it written down.
So Ms. Harris, what we can do is, we can vote on it preliminarily, if you don't get the information you need by final vote, we can recommit the bill.
Thank you.
All right, um, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed.
Abstain.
One abstention, still positive recommendation, that takes us back to page five, which is the, um, Land Use and Economic Development Committee, Ms. Gross is here, do you have a problem, um, Ms. Gross, if I read all of the bills together, because I think they're all just transfers?
That's fine, thank you.
Bill 1546, resolution amending, resolution number 50, so as to transfer funds within City Council from Neighborhood Learning Alliance and transfer these funds to Birmingham Foundation, $176.74.
Corey.
Bill number 1547, resolution amending, resolution number 51, so as to transfer funds within City Council from Neighborhood Learning Alliance.
I tried, get you an answer.
And transfer these funds to Birmingham Foundation, $176.74. Bill number 1548, resolution amending, resolution number 195, so as to reprogram funds within City Council from Neighborhood Learning Alliance to Birmingham Foundation, $7,365.46. Bill number 1549, resolution amending, resolution number 196, so as to reprogram funds within City Council from Neighborhood Learning Alliance to Birmingham Foundation, $7,365.46. Bill number 1550, resolution amending, resolution number 199, so as to reprogram funds within the City Council Office from Bridge Committee to Northside Leadership Conference Bridge Committee and Mount Washington CDC Quality of Life Committee to Elliott West End Athletic Association, $5,579.48. Bill number 1551, resolution amending, resolution number 200, so as to reprogram funds within City Council from Bridge Committee to Northside Leadership Conference Bridge Committee and Mount Washington CDC Quality of Life Committee to Elliott West End Athletic Association, Bill number 1552, resolution amending, resolution 197, so as to reprogram funds within City Council's Office from Neighborhood Learning Alliance, wind charge senior rent, Youth Places Hurricane Youth Athletic Association, to Birmingham Foundation, wind charge seniors' rent and computer reach $3,000. Bill number 1553, resolution amending, resolution number 198, so as to reprogram funds within City Council from Neighborhood Learning Alliance, wind charge seniors' rent to Youth Places Hurricane Youth Athletic Association, to Birmingham Foundation, wind charge seniors' rent and computer reach $3,000. Bill number 1554, resolution amending, resolution number 203, so as to issue a name change within City Council Budget, Parks and Recreation, Southwest Pittsburgh CDC to computer reach St. Andrews Lutheran Church, Associated Master Plumbers of Allegheny County, West End Power and Birmingham Foundation, West Side Mustangs, $2,500. Bill number 1555, resolution amending, resolution number 204, so as to perform a name change within City Council from Park Rec, Parks and Recreation, Southwest Pittsburgh CDC to computer reach St. Andrews Lutheran Church, Associated Masters Plumbing of Allegheny County, West End Power and Birmingham Foundation, West Side Mustangs, $2,500. Bill number 1556, resolution amending, resolution number 178, so as to transfer funds within City Council from Bridge Committee, West End Employment Center to Northside Leadership Conference Bridge Committee, Birmingham Foundation, West Side Mustang, Pittsburgh Musical Theater, Sheridan United Methodist Church Kids Club and the Education Partnership, $10,000. Bill number 1557, resolution amending, resolution number 179, so as to transfer funds within City Council as follows, from Bridge Committee, West End Employment Center to Northside Leadership Conference Bridge Committee, Birmingham Foundation, West Side Mustang, Pittsburgh Musical Theater, Sheridan United Methodist Church Kids Club, the Education Partnership, $10,000.
Need a motion, Ms. Gross?
Motion to approve.
Any second.
Second.
Any other conversation? No conversation? Mrs. Harris?
Yeah, just so you know, that, uh, the peace in air for the Bridge Committee is because of the problems of the double stack trades, and that's with Northside Leadership Conference, and I know, um, we have your district in, uh, not Squirrel Hill, Shadyside is.
Polish Hill is very concerned as well.
And Polish Hill, there's, well, there's a lot of communities concerned, and well should be.
Great.
Thank you.
Any other conversation? No conversation, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposers nay. Before we adjourn, I have a few announcements.
Excellent, point order.
Yes.
Mr. Terrell, if I have a question about, um, recommitting the DPW bill, um, 1538, I'm kind of having second thoughts about holding it two weeks, and I thought I could call Councilwoman Smith, do we have enough votes? Do we need six votes to recommit, or can we reconsider with five votes?
I think you need six. I think you need six for reconsider.
I can't believe we're down to five people and this happens, and it's always the same, five people at the table.
Kudos to us.
So we, so we can, but we can, next week, we can bring it back to the table next week, so even though we can at the moment, we can bring it back next.
Will we consider?
Reconsider, motion reconsidered next week.
Next Wednesday.
Yep.
Appreciate it.
Yep, okay.
Bill number 1538?
1538, exactly, yeah.
So next, next week, if you want, just let me know.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
We can bring it back next week, okay? This afternoon at 2 o'clock, council will hold a cablecast post-agenda discussion on the state of food insecurities. Also next Wednesday, April 24th, 2 o'clock, council will hold a cablecast post-agenda discussion on LERTA audit. As a reminder and observance of Good Friday, the City of Pittsburgh offices and city parks will be closed this Friday, April 19th. Refuge, block waste and recycling collection will continue as scheduled on that day. I need a motion to excuse the absent members, approve the minutes and adjourn the meeting. Need a motion for those three things. I need a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposers nay. We are adjourned, thank you very much for your patience. Thank you very much for your patience.